Board to work.
Will you please join me in observing a moment of silence? Thank you.
Ms. Maxwell, you give us a touch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, I will entertain a motion for additions amendments for adoption of the proposed agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Um, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda asking that any public that wants to make up public comments about anything on the agenda tonight or anything has a chance to speak.
I second.
Great. It is moved and seconded to amend the agenda to include a period for public comment. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Sorry.
Sorry.
We have from Redwood saying aye. That's okay. We have from Redwood saying aye. So the ayes have it and we have an amended agenda. Um, what we'll do is we will have our information item with Mr. Waltrip first and then we'll open a period for public comment. So at this time, I welcome Mr. Waltrip to the lectern to give us an update on the construction of the new Butchlin' Elementary.
Evening, everyone. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Carmody, as previously mentioned, my name is Ryan Waldrop, the project manager with MVP. Tonight, I'll be sharing a brief update of the current construction status of the New Butchlin' Elementary School project here in the county. So as most of you are aware, we held the ribbon cutting ceremony event, open house on July eighteenth from four to seven P M. for the school division and also the entire community was able to attend. From our opinion, the turnout was incredible, very well attended from the community aspect and everything a true testament to the pride and joy of Butchlin' and the community as a whole. So with that, you know, during the opening remarks and everything, we made comment that we're still in the final stages of construction, working through the final aspects of inspections and everything, actively working out issues, final checklist with the contractor, then also with the partners on the county side, working with building officials, you know, going through all the checks and balances. So within the next week or so, we'll have aspects from the design team ranging from Sand Tech, Ascent, Timmons, along with MVP conducting an entire building walkthrough, you know, actively walking through the building, looking at punch list items, making deficiencies and occasions for the contractor to ask to fix over the next twenty months. So with that, talking about deficiencies, commented items, you know, that'll range from paint issues, you know, marks on the walls, you know, issues with either floor or tile that could just pop up randomly and everything. With that, it'll also be passed to the teachers and the staff of the actual school. So they'll have a Google form that they'll fill out. They're the ones actually using the building. So they're the best ones, you know, functioning through, you know, casework, cabinetry, you know, if a door sticks or something, they're able to mark this up on a Google form, send it directly to us and then we'll pass it on to the appropriate contractor or subcontractor with that. So typically with all these inspections and everything, they range from either, you know, the building aspect of it, that'll be the primary focus of the actual list, and they also range from the exterior of the building as a building envelope, and then also the site work around the actual site. Because this is a massive project, that'll go all the way down to Bulldog, all the way up to the high school. That's where we made our utility connections for the actual project. So it's not just focused inside the building, it's the entire project, you know, that comes. With that, when we're going through inspections, that also, you know, went to the, you know, county side of it with all the planning departments, zoning departments, that's currently what we're working through right now to get that final approval. So as typical with a building this size, you know, the magnitude of the list will be, you know, very massive. It's a hundred and fourths, a thousand square foot building. So upwards, we're looking, you know, at the very wide list of things that, you know, will need to be corrected, but you're talking from very minute to some of the major issues, you know, seating, stuff like that, that'll be on that list. With that, those items and corrections will take place, you know, they've already started through that process and everything, but we all know that we can't, you know, complete the entire building for punch lists in a matter of days or just in a week. So we all know that this is going to continue throughout the, you know, first month of school, the second month, and so on, with some major activities taking place in the evening hours and then also during the weekend. So that's been, you know, discussed with Dr. Carmody, you know, Ms. McKay and Hersap and everything, that will be very, very minor disruption to the actual school infrastructure, the school schedule and everything, with all those activities being planned well in advance and actually discussed with her, just making sure that we're working with everyone. Talking about constant communication, that's, you know, utmost respect and everything. We don't want to, you know, displace her or anything. It's her building, it's her, you know, schedule and everything. So we'll work around that, including also any events that are there from the high school or middle school, you know, auxiliary gym and everything, and then any other thing that's taken by M C A, we'll take that into consideration. So as for the financial aspect and everything, G C P S, you know, as you may be aware, we make monthly payments to the contractor on a monthly basis. So with that, you know, along with MVP and the design consultants, we review the payout on a monthly basis, and we only pay what we're actually approving and the work that's actually completed and completed. So we don't prepay for any activities. There may be a couple for material that we prepay in advance, but we know that the material is there with a certificate of insurance. So with that, G C P S, like I said, we only pay for approved and completed work. So that usually typically leaves us one to two months behind on payment, just how we pay the contractor. So with that, right now, we're right at around seven million dollars that we're still ordering for the contract. That's as of May. So we're getting ready to pay out the June monthly payment. So that'll put us around five million dollars, a little bit with the math and everything, part of that gets held in retainers. So on every single monthly payout, we hold five percent of the contract that we keep just as collateral to the very end, that forces the contractor to complete those punch list items and we pay that out on a monthly basis. So even when the project comes to a hundred percent completed, we still hold that five percent. That'll get dwindled down to make sure everything's completed in the building's final hour. So talking about some of the future items, you know, future timeline and everything, you know, we had the ribbon cutting event. That was a tremendous event, tremendous milestone for the project, just thinking ahead and everything. So right now, we're looking at audit on July thirty first for admin movement. That's when it's typically scheduled. So we want to get admin in there first, get them set up and then established in there. With that, most, everyone's aware that, you know, the teachers want to get in the building. We all know that. We all know that's a present that should get them in there. So we're establishing dates to get them in ahead of time so they can go ahead and set up their classrooms so that they have everything set up and ready for the first day of school. With that leads us to the very first day of school when kids arrive. That'll be August nineteenth. So we have our milestones in place that we're working with the county, we're working with the contractor that we have established and working towards that as an end goal. So with that, just, you know, allowing me to give this update greatly appreciated and everything. Dr. Carmody's across and everything. Any questions that you guys may have, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Waltrip. Board members, any questions for Mr. Waltrip? I have several. Okay, so we're three weeks from opening day, which is super exciting. I want to begin by recognizing the hard work of your team, Shaki, Timmons, all of our professionals that made the ribbon cutting ceremony possible. It was clear the amount of energy and enthusiasm there was from our community, especially the students that will get to enjoy this new building. Um, I think you spoke to it, but I want to be really explicit for the benefit of the public. While we're working through the punch list items, will we have any tradesmen or vocational employees on site during the school hours? Or I heard you mention evening or weekends?
So the majority, majority of work will be taking place during the evening hours and the weekends, but there may be one or two trades that do need to get into the building during an occupied setting and everything. Of course, we'll follow the, you know, guidelines that you put in place for visitors and everything, going through the check, um, background check and everything, guiding in just like a regular, you know, person would, going through all those checks and balances. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. And how confident are you for our August nineteenth?
Right now, we're meeting with the county and everything. We have a timeline in place to make that date.
About a hundred percent? Ninety percent? Eighty?
Right now, we're working with the contractor and we're working with the county, with the state that's, with the dates that we have established to make that timeline, you know, a reality.
If there is anything that we can do to support those efforts, please let us know.
Definitely will.
Thank you for the update and also for the weekly updates that Ms. White shared with us. They are so helpful so that we know what's going on with the project.
We will continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waltrip.
Okay, as we have amended our agenda, we're going to now have public comment and we welcome public comment on matters germane to the business being conducted. As a reminder, speaker comments are limited to three minutes and should be addressed to the chair. If you would like a response from your school board representative, please leave your contact information with Ms. Bennett and please state your name and address for the record. The public comment period is now open. Seeing none, the public comment period is now closed. Thank you. Um, moving to action items. Board members, um, I'll entertain a motion to consider the three action items before us. We have three action items. We have policy update, contractual services for board docs and policy services. So I just need a motion to consider the business of those items.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
I move that we consider the, um, the three items, three items.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's take these one at a time. Dr. East, love to have you present information on the policy updates related to cell phone usage, please.
Hello, all. So we have three regulations that the board, um, the content of which the board discussed at the June eighteenth retreat.
July.
I'm sorry, July, uh, eighteen, twenty twenty-four retreat. Um, these items were then taken to the policy committee and revised and they are being proposed to you. Um, J F C R had the addition of cellphone language. Cellphone language and then dress code. And J R C, uh, J, I don't have my glasses on. J F C R two, R one, very minimal. Um, this is just our outward facing, um, discipline ladder. And J F C R two has, uh, the consequences of which the board, uh, the policy committee revised.
Thank you, Dr. East. Um, members of the policy advisory committee, is there anything you would like to add?
Madam Chair, um, the reason that this is so important is for the, for the, um, well, instructional time. The social development of students so that they actually talk to other students instead of texting to one phone while they're walking next door to each other. Um, it's good for, to, for, to keep cyber bullying down. Um, there's just so many different things that it's, that we believe it's important for in order to, to keep our kids safe.
And if I may interject, the governor's executive order thirty-three, um, divorce us to address cell phones.
Ms. Wilson.
And, um, just not to, um, I also wanted to speak to the fact that we want to make sure we maximize instructional time and minimize disruptions for the teachers and for the students there to learn. So the policy, I think, is pretty straightforward and I think there may be some, um, questions that, um, other board members might want to ask.
So I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm hoping, I know in the beginning it's going to be difficult for everybody, um, especially the teachers. Um, and so my heart goes out to them because I know it's, it's going to be rough, um, having had two teenage girls that were addicted to their phones at one point. So I understand that. Um, but I, I, I hope that, you know, eventually that things calm down and, and that the teachers, you know, again, that their, their time isn't impacted. You know, I mean, I think that's the best way to keep, so they're not having to do each individual period where they're having to take the phone, give it back. And it just seems better if it's at the beginning of the day, the end of the day. But I know it's going to be a struggle for all involved. So we really do.
Are we pretty concrete on what we're going to do with those cell phones during the day?
Well, the, it, it was the board's intent, I believe, to, and the policy committee's intent to, uh, give the administrators the discretion to implement how they will, will follow the, will comply with policy.
Did we ever consider those halls of lockers that children have access to a locker to lock up their phone during the day and retrieve it at night, which would eliminate teacher, unless there's a problem, teacher responsibility, administrative possibilities of having to handle things that we use those lockers that are empty?
Uh, right. We have lockers at the secondary complex.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I, I'm not really sure what the principals are. I know what the high school's going to do. I'm not really sure what the middle school is going to do. That just would be a better question for Mr. East. Um, I can, you know, I can relay the message.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, it just seems we have the lockers, we're not moving along with something else. That would be, with the exception of purchasing a combination, each child would be responsible to handle that. And that would be good. I mean, one ability.
Thank you.
Um, so thank you to Dr. East and to the policy committee for the quick turn on this work. For the benefit of the public, um, there's a few thoughts I want to share. One is the expediency here is so that we don't have to make a shift for students and staff mid-year, which is always very difficult, uh, to make a change, particularly a change of this magnitude, um, in the middle of the academic year. Um, the other thing is to Dr. East's point, Governor Yonkin has put forth executive order thirty-three regarding cell phones, uh, in public education spaces. And we're trying to get in front of those changes. And, and the last comment I'll share is this is not from a expectations point of view, so drastically different than where we've been in previous school years as far as the cell phone should be away. Um, so if you were to look at, you know, the policy prior, there wasn't like, oh, use it when you want, and then if you cause problems, then we'll deal with it. And so I'm hoping that by bringing this back, this will give our teachers and our administration more support for ensuring that we don't disrupt the instructional time and that students understand the high expectations we have to focus on learning first. Um, so that's for all the parents and students out there that think we're making some radical change. Actually, the changes are very minimal. It is the application of the spirit of the policy from the past. So we want to make sure that it has, I think, a little more clarity around those expectations. I do want to acknowledge that it is not typical for the policy committee to address regulations. Um, again, I think this quick turn is in response to us trying to get this so that administrators and teachers can have it for, uh, day one of school. Um, but this definitely, I would see as something that Dr. Carmody and his team, from a regulations point of view, would handle going forward. Um, and welcome your thoughts on it at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, what we would like to be able to do is take a look at the policy and the spirit and look at it in terms of applicability. Um, if we implement a policy for the benefit of preserving instructional time and the way that we apply the policy ends up taking instructional time, then we defeated the initial purpose of implementing a policy again. So what we'd like to be able to do is find something that's efficient, that maintains the integrity and the spirit of the policy, that, um, allows our teachers and administrative teams, the primary share of the day, to do those jobs that we trust them to do, that's actually teaching students and running our instructional programs. Um, and we'll work to do that. We'll work to do that in earnest. I just, I, I would caution against any practice or implementation for the policy in the spirit of saving instructional time. It's going to take teachers' time away from direct teaching and calling parents and doing a lot of the things we'll have to do. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
I just have one more question. What is an educational module course?
So we currently have, um, courses that students would take, say, if they were caught with tobacco, um, baking, baking product or, or the like. Um, one of the consequences is to, you know, because what we want to do is we want to guide our kids.
Absolutely.
We, we want to teach behaviors that we're looking for. And so in order to do that, we provide them with education. This is what's going to happen to your body as a preteen, as a teenager, if you continue to, to, to date. So that's what happens.
Okay.
Do they, um, do that during the school day or when they are in I S S or?
They do.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, so if they, if they do something, an activity that they get suspended for and if it's out of school suspension, are they given a packet of work to work on from, by their teachers or?
We off, yes. That's the expectation that we do not deny them the education purposes.
I don't, I have hate for them to fall behind. I mean, obviously, they're in trouble, but at the same time, you don't want them to fall behind where it's almost impossible to get back on track.
We don't want that either.
Yeah. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, I, I, I would just like to mention that as far as the dress code is concerned, we went back to the origin, well, to the previous dress code language.
Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, so, so that, that, that came directly from that. It's, um, a little more clear as to what's expected.
And I think that's a good call out, Miss Moses, because while we were focused on cell phone usage, because the regulations related to student expectations were examined as part of that process, there are changes on dress code, consequences, and there's a third one.
Yeah, that, that's the next two policies.
Yes, that is the next two. Um, and I think we should read for the benefit of the public, the cell phone change, or excuse me, the dress code changes, so that on August nineteenth, folks don't show up, clothing that exposes cleavage, private parts, the midriff or undergarments are also prohibited. And this includes sagging or low cut pants, low cut necklines that show cleavage, tube tops, halter tops, backless shirts, clothing constructed of see-through materials, and head coverings unless required for religious or medical purposes. Um, that's the new, uh, piece of the code. So folks may want to make sure that they're having a gander at that. And I would just encourage all of our students, school is your job. So think about if you were going into your office, how you might present yourself and consider your best options before coming to the classroom. Um, every choice matters. Any further comments or questions on the policies, regulations before us this evening?
I guess when I say I really compliment you because this has been pretty quick, all this together and also our two board members. Um, I think you've done a fabulous job. I think it's hard to not make it look like dictatorship and yet how do you want to present yourself in the world? And if we start early and high expectations of the way we look, it doesn't have to be an expensive look. It just has to be how you go to work. And if that, that's easy to answer and that's easy to press for. But anyways, um, I appreciate all the work that you've done in such a short amount of time.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are two separate motions related to the policy updates. We need to take them in order. So first, I'll entertain a motion to waive second reading of policy J F C dash R and adopt on first reading.
So we.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Great. It's moved and seconded to waive second reading of policy J F C dash R and adopt on first reading. Is there any debate?
Um, I don't want any debate. I just want to say that this is a, it's a time sensitive thing in order to get the policies and, and regulations in, uh, in line for, for the day of the school, or the school year. Uh, we don't want to wait till January. We don't want to wait till November. Even if it may have a little bit wrong with it, we can, we can fix it. Um, but it's better to have something in line, right, in, in the story.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy J F C dash R as presented.
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy J F C R as presented.
Second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve policy J F C R as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. Policy J F C dash R is approved. Thank you, Dr. East.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, the second action item before us this evening is with regards to contractual services for board docs. Were we dealing with all three or just the first?
That's up to you whether you wanted to a, adopt all three or?
I need guidance from the policy advisory committee about what your expectations were because R one and R two feeling regulations to me that would fall back to school administration and Dr. Carmody and his team. So, but I'm looking for guidance here.
I think the intent of the policy committee was to have all three approved.
Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful. All right, we've approved one. So now let's go back to, do we want to have discussion on J F C R one or two? Dr. Carmody, are there any thoughts you would like to share on those proposed regulation changes? Not putting you on the hot seat, just want to give you an opportunity.
May I, Madam Chair?
Um, I see for J F C R one, the changes appear to be.
Very minimal.
Yes.
Just really nothing substantive for R one.
Yes, it's R two where we have the need of the changes. I would love, just for the benefit of the public and to make sure that we're all on the same page, um, is, what was the thought process from the policy advisory committee on changes to J F C R one and two that were outside of cell phone use at this time? Like, we have, we have changes related to tobacco products and, um, and the like. Just curious as to where the expediency is around those changes.
So I can speak to tobacco products. This tobacco products was mainly driven by the administrators. They wanted these consequences to, to be.
They wanted these, uh, consequences to, to be moved through. Um, there were a few tweaks by the committee, uh, made to introduce the educational model. Um, but for the most part, they were what the administrators wanted. Um, yeah, one, two, three, yes. For the cellphone consequences, um, these were, um, first revised by the administrators and then, uh, examined by the committee. And the committee, um, is propos, proposing a few tweaks to what the administrators wanted. And that would be, uh, they wanted G M S and G H S to have the same consequences across, across the board. Uh, first and second offenses, uh, both to include parent contact. And, uh, let's see, third, third offense, um, let's see, it was a, I think it was similar to what the administrators wanted. And fourth was verbatim, to what administrators wanted.
I think, um, for, for the third, third offense for, for the G M S and G H S, um, I think the major difference there was that, um, instead of giving the, throwing back to the student, it went back to the student's parent.
And introducing that educational model, um, yeah, model. And only on that first day and then for five days, um, it would be the student, turn it into administration. And administrators wanted that five-day check-in.
Right.
And with any luck, it would never get past the first, actually, with any luck, it wouldn't have any offenses. And after the parent contact of the first offense, hopefully, there wouldn't be any second offense.
Um, thank you for that summary. It's really important to hear that administration has had an opportunity to give input, um, on some of these changes and that the other changes unrelated to cellphone policy were in response to their request. So thank you, that's important. Um, okay. Any further comments or questions about J F C R one and two? Okay. We're going to do this by the book. We're going to break this down just like we did on J F C R. So I'm looking for a motion to waive second reading of J F C R one and two and adopt on first reading.
Madam Chair, I maybe we waive second reading of J F C R one and J F C R two and adopt on first reading.
I second it.
Great, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I, I would like to have a, a little discussion of this. If we were to wait, okay, consider this a first read and then have second read in two weeks at a regular meeting, would that be enough time to get things incorporated?
Well, I, I actually spoke to Mr. I spoke to Mr. Mason, um, earlier today and he, um, is getting his handbook ready for school. And wanted to know tomorrow what, what happens.
Okay.
Got questions? Hence, the other reason for this special meeting to begin with. Still provide our building administrators more runway for implementation. Okay, thank you, Ms. Mason. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of, um, waiving second reading of policy J F C R one and J F C R two and adopting on first reading, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Great, the ayes have it and we have waived second reading and adopting on first reading. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve J F C R one and J F C R two as presented.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I move to, um, accept J R C one and two as written.
I second, I second it.
Okay. It's moved and seconded to accept J F C R one and J F C R two as presented. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, you have new J F C Rs approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Dr. East. And thank you to our administrators for their input. These are so, so important.
Thank you, Dr. East.
Sure, thank you.
Now, I can move to board docs. This one's an easy one. Um, board members, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent negotiating and executing a contract with Diligent for the use of the board docs software.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent negotiating and executing a contract with Diligent for the use of board doc software.
I second.
Great, it is moved and properly seconded to authorize Dr. Camardi to negotiate, execute a contract for board docs. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add, for the benefit of the public, this change is needed. Um, at the July eighteenth school board retreat, the action item was, uh, passed to sever the relationship between Goochlin County School Board and the Virginia School Boards Association, which formally had within it our board docs software. So now we need to independently contract with Diligent to have that software service provided for the school board. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dr. Camardi, thank you for taking care of that business on our behalf.
Absolutely, thank you.
The last action item before us this evening, board members, is related to policy services. Um, thank you to Ms. Bennett for, uh, including on the agenda the proposal from the school board members alliance for their policy services, which includes the details of the scope of services provided as well as the annual fee for set services. I'll entertain a motion to approve execution of an agreement with the S D M A to provide policy services.
Madam Chair, I move to approve execution of an agreement with the school board member alliance to provide policy services.
I second it.
It is moved and properly seconded to execute an agreement with S D M A for policy services. Is there any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. It's our favorite kind of meeting.
Madam Chair. I, um, move that we adjourn.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Fantastic. The Goochlin County School Board will reconvene at five thirty P M on Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four for a regular monthly business meeting here at the Goochlin Administration Building, eighteen hundred Sandy Hook Road, room two fifty. We are hereby adjourned.